Meeting call to order. Today is Tuesday, July 9th. It is now 6:04 PM. Town council meeting, town council chambers, 1170 Main Street. Jay, wisdom of prayer.
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick. Amen.
Jay, wisdom of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That was quick.
Roll call. Councilman Dennison is absent. Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
And Council President Goslin?
Here.
Forum is declared. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting and cancellation of taxes in the amount of $6,158.58.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinances. Second reading of ordinance 2024-6 amending Appendix C Traffic ordinances, Glof Avenue.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Stop sign on Glof. Stop sign on Glof Avenue.
No, no parking.
No, no parking, Glof Avenue.
Let's see, with the stop sign going on Glof.
Yeah.
Again, we brought this up last meeting, just where the old transfer station is, that area right there, no parking. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any counsel? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2024-7 amending Chapter 11 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Section 47 Motor Vehicle Restricted Routes and Appendix C Traffic ordinances, Campbell Street.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second.
No trucking, no through trucking on Campbell Street.
And I think that was Councilman Dennison.
Yes.
Board. Any comment from the council? Any public comment on no through trucking in Campbell Street? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2024-8 amending Appendix C Traffic ordinances, Quaker Drive.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second.
Stop sign at the intersection of Quaker and Shady Hill with the stop sign on Quaker.
Any comment from the council? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First reading of ordinance 2024-10 amending Chapter 10, Section 54 Mobile Food Establishments.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. And Al?
There's been some discussion, few changes in the statute. So this ordinance uses the, puts the Department of Business Regulation and names it as the registering ordinance organization. It uses the statutory definition of mobile food establishment. The two changes that were made was one, that they cannot be located within 500 feet of a food serving establishment or restaurant with a relatively the same menu. And the second is that their hours are from 10:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, unless they're in conjunction with some other activity. And then they have the same hours as that activity that they, for example, the council has allowed carnivals on midnight. Their hours are the same as that. The 500 feet and the 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock was, I had to come up with a number. I put that in for, you know, I figured 1,000 feet from a restaurant, the functions that go on at the center, we wouldn't be able to have them anywhere near. So I just arbitrarily came up with 500 feet. And the 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock was just something that I thought was reasonable, but left it, you know, up for your decision.
The only thing with the 10 o'clock is if we have signs out that says if they're in a park and park closes at dusk, then they would have to adjust that to...
Well, it says if it's in conjunction with another activity, they follow the hours of that activity.
On the back end and on the front end too, correct?
Yeah.
So if there happened to be an event up there that was going till that time, whether it was like one of our town, a food truck night or a car show, I mean, those don't go till 10:00 anyway, but Christmas tree lighting, I mean, I know we don't have food trucks really for that.
Right. And if you have lights and they go to 11:00, they can say it 11:00.
The 10 to 10:00 was primarily if you hire it for your birthday party in your backyard, that type of thing. But if there's some function going on and they are at that function, whether it's at a playground or that closes at dusk or whatever, they follow the hours of that move.
Yeah. So I think, I think about a baseball game that's happening in the morning. You know, maybe it's an 8:30 game and you're going to tell me I shouldn't have ice cream or Dells then, but you know what? That's, but that would be allowed. That would be okay because there's an activity going on.
They call it noise ordinance, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, to be honest.
Yeah. My other question too, and I know that we always mention this with the, with the same menu. And obviously we always use the example as like a hot dog truck next to Perugia's or something like that. But it is tough because menus, a lot of restaurants have a variety of menu items. So it's kind of...
So I know personally businesses, food trucks have asked to go down on Phoenix Square. You know, we have Phoenix Square diner there, obviously.
Yeah. And Bill's has a menu. So a lot of things are going to be on both menus, right?
The Phoenix Square is 500 feet from Bill's, but close to it. For the most part, I've asked them to work like after the business. So like if they're doing a function after 2:00 on, because that business is closed. So it should be, you know, if, you know, if a place is closed on Sundays and there's a food truck in that area, I don't see it being an issue during non-business hours of that restaurant. I mean, Bill's Pizza is closed on Sundays, right? So if they set up down in front of Bill's or, you know,
I would think we could, it could be amended to not within 500 feet at a food serving restaurant, a stallion restaurant during the normally scheduled hours of such.
That would probably make sense. And I don't know that I don't, I think I agree with David. Why not make it the noise ordinance? Why not make it 7:00 to 11:00? Yeah.
Because they have donut, they have donut, they have coffee ones. They have pancake food trucks. They have breakfast food trucks.
You're a connoisseur of food trucks.
Quite a few of those.
I'll make the amendment for second reading.
Yes, that would be great.
I'm sorry, was there a fee on here? I missed?
No, that's, that's in the fee schedule. It's already in Appendix C.
Well, don't, don't all the food trucks get through the state now, right?
They, they get their license through the state, but there's some, you know, some kind of a fee, but...
I know it changed within the last couple of years. I remember we talked about it.
And they are not food trucks. They are mobile food establishments.
That's right. Don't forget.
I'm going to the mobile food establishment night at Rogelins Park, not food truck night.
Any other comment from the council? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes with the amendments.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-11 approving the financing of the design, construction, equipment, replacement, repair and rehabilitation of the town's regional wastewater treatment facility in an amount not to exceed $7,400,000.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. Who wants to speak on this? Anybody?
I can give you the basics. I believe Jim's might be on Zoom if you have specifics. But essentially, we've discussed this now for several months on going out to bond on some major projects at the wastewater facility. Specifically, but not, including but not limited to replacement of the ultraviolet disinfection system, upgrades to the supervisory control and data acquisition or SCADA system, rehabilitation of the East Natick Interceptor and upgrades to the Macy Quinn Relief Pump Station. Obviously, that's all high value projects and much needed or preventative maintenance. The estimated cost of that is the 6.5 million and then the additional funding is for interest and associated fees.
Any questions for Mark?
No, but I, we might add that we've notified the other communities, correct, about this? So they are aware that this is coming down the pike.
Yeah, I'm going to spend $700 million. I'm not going to not talk about it.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Any public comments to this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Business licenses.
Go ahead. I just did a restart on its own.
Do you want me to read the business licenses, the list of them or?
So I will move the business licenses. Dog dealership, Tilly's Thrift Shop Dog Dealership, which is twice, once for an Amplify Los Pico, one for Car and Dog Show, R. Icona LLC, Casa Tia Rosa and Christopher Comedy.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on these licenses? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointments and resignations, resignations, request from Michael Bedard for reappointment to the Tuxit River Authority for term ending June 2027.
Move the reappointment of Michael Bedard?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion?
No, Michael's been involved in West Warwick for a long time and clearly wants to remain that way. I think that's, would be foolish not to accept his help.
We, I mean, the River Authority, I mean, I've said it before, they do an unbelievable job. And they get really, they don't get as much credit as they deserve. They're really in the trenches all the time as far as a cleanup skull, every one of them. And we have excellent representation of West Warwick. So I agree with you, Mary Beth.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Request from Joshua Barrett for reappointment to the West Warwick Planning Board for term ending July 2029.
Move the reappointment of Josh Barrett?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? I know Josh always keeps up some forms. He's been on, on there, served on other boards too. He's always called me and talked to me about things going on in the community, very involved. So good asset to the planning board.
He has been a...
Are you recusing yourself?
I have to, by order of the Ethics Commission, I have to recuse myself on this vote.
He has been a valuable member of the board.
Just for the record, Councilman Luchardi recused himself. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Request from Anthony Corente for appointment to the West Warwick 250th Commission.
Move that we approve the Tony's appointment to the 250th Commission.
Second.
Moving second.
And I know there's some discussion about, and there are no residential requirements. And Tony actually works for the, for the town. He did live here. He has a longstanding, his family has a longstanding history here in West Warwick. And I think we would be lucky to have him be involved.
It's a state thing also.
It is a state thing. That's correct. It's West Warwick's part of the state 250th.
I think us appointing him versus the town he lives in appoints.
It's our coup. That's right.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Tony.
And thank you.
Resignation of Peter Kelsey Jr. from the zoning board.
With regret, I move that we accept the resignation of Peter Kelsey from the zoning board.
Second.
Recusing yourself.
Yeah, I have to.
Just checking.
You know, no, I'm going to say something though. This, this is getting pretty ridiculous that I have to, I know you, you agree with me. I have to continue to recuse myself from voting on planning and zoning due to a ethics committee decision, which I disagree with. But I, I can't say yes or no to this, but I mean, I'm going to say that, I haven't talked to Peter Kelsey in about, I don't know, six or seven years or so. I've seen the meetings. He has a ton of knowledge about the town, whether I agree or disagree with what he says. And sometimes I do both. But it's, to me, it's a shame that you have somebody who served as a council person, and we all know how difficult that is. And then you are no longer on the council, whether it's by loss of an election or by choice. And then you serve in another capacity, whether it's a board or a committee. And, and it's a shame that you lose good people. And, and I, I can't vote. But if I were to vote, I probably would say no, but I'm not saying that officially.
But you can't. You can't do that. No.
So, but I'm not for this.
No, and unfortunately, I'm not sure exactly the backstory of it, but we received an email last week. I have not reached out to Peter, but he is very knowledgeable. And if anybody does their homework and reads, reads everything in that agenda, it's Peter. So with regret, I would, I don't want to see him leave either, you know? But unfortunately, he's made that choice. And I, I know Peter and there is a stubborn side to him. So it'd be very hard to probably...
Not that you and I have a stubborn side either.
But again, I, you know, I, I regretfully hate to say, see him leave because he does have a lot of knowledge. Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And if we could just send him a thank you.
A big thank you. Yeah.
New business, request from Marathon Construction and Development for Lipit Mill Taxation Abatement.
I don't know, move it or if it's for discussion at this point, or I know that Sal sent some stuff to us.
Did I talk about it yet?
Do we want to move it or we have to move it if we're going to talk about it?
So I guess I'll move.
Discussion purposes only.
I'll move it for discussion purposes only. Yes.
So I'll go off of the letter received. It's an undated letter that, that came in through the tax assessor. For the, for Marathon, the company that's proposing to purchase the Lipit Mill, I believe they expect to have a closing within the next 60 days. They're seeking a tax agreement. Because they are doing affordable housing at the level designated by the state, they are eligible for an 8% gross rent tax agreement. They're seeking to double that through the town in ordinance to do a 4% tax rent agreement. So essentially, I think most of you are aware that the current agreement with the owners or the developers that worked on it up until a year and a half ago, the taxes we've been receiving have been zero for as long as I can remember. With this proposal, Marathon's willing to pay the tax on the land and the taxes on the building as they're assessed now. So the tax on the land would be approximately $13,000. And then depending on the, what is completed within the tax year, the tax on the building could range between 45,000 and 75,000. They, they say they, they could get this up and open within a year's time. I know it was mentioned as part of, can that be part of an agreement? I suppose it, it could. So just as an estimate for the rent amount at 4% for the duration of the agreement, the tax income for the rental would be estimated at 49,920. But that's a estimate using the 65 units and rental at 1,600.
So I went on a tour of a couple of buildings that they're redoing or they built down in Providence. This group, father-son combination. They've done a great job in the Broad Street section of Providence. And the units that they built, very nice, seems like very organized company. I, I gotta say Lipit Mill's been a 13-year, maybe even more, but 13 years in the making of redoing. And it's just sitting there vacant, trees falling into Main Street, brush growing over fences, all over the property. It's, I'm surprised it's still there, to be honest with you. With between animals and whatever else flocking into the place. So I mean, something needs to be done. And, you know, unfortunately bankruptcy happened to the previous individuals. I know there was a lot of personal issues and backers backing out and backers actually passing away. So this group here was actually the very first group that was introducing this back in 2006, '08 when Mr. Ponti owned the building. And then Mr. Ponti went bankrupt altogether from the lace factory and everything. So they were pushed out. So the new company came in, took over. This company sat back and was watching what was going on. And, you know, I think they're paying pretty penny for the building itself right now. I think it's somewhere between three and four million dollars. I know Mary Beth and I have reached out to Larry.
Phillips.
Larry Phillips over here who did Factory Street Mill. And we, we talked to him. He was actually, he actually went down there, looked at that mill. And he said, we couldn't give him 3 million to take that project. So that just tells you, you know, the guy who put that project in play in two years won't touch the Lipit Mill. But this group is willing to do so. So we gave a 10-year break to the previous individuals. And that was when our certificate of occupancy was going to be awarded. Obviously, that never happens. So we've been collecting nothing on that building. Where this here, this, this 4% based off rental, it's, it's pushing them to get the work done. But that's only the first phase of the project. There's a phase two of the project, which has to go through DEM and all that, which more condo, believe it or not, there's a lot of land that goes all the way down to the subway in the Clyde section. So all that land in the back on the river. So there's, there's some work to be done there, but that's what they're looking at doing and redeveloping also. This is phase one. So, and they're very adamant about phase two also. So I, I don't see an issue. It's something, we've worked with a lot of individuals with these mills. So I think, you know, if they're, if they're willing to come in, I would like to see some sort of timeline. I mean, I know they're closing hopefully by August, but I'd like to see it. Like I'd give a two-year time, you know, being able to get COs. I mean, it's just, I don't want to see another 13 years go by. I mean, we're getting, I'm still getting calls on other developments that have been in the hopper for seven years now. And one of the, you know, people are sick and tired of looking at, you know, so yeah, when things start rolling, I just don't want it to stop and let them go 10 more years without collecting.
If the council's open to negotiating, not only what they're looking for regarding tax relief pursuant to a timeframe, that can be discussed with them. This is like, like the manager said, it's an undated letter. I know that I spoke to Richard Land, who's part and parcel of the receivership, that's been before Judge Leach for the last at least four years. So one of the issues that we've discussed about, because we got named as a party defendant, even though we're not really involved in anything, is that they had to keep the tax issue or the tax abatement issue open to make it more attractive to someone to buy it through the receivership. So now if they're coming to the town saying, look, the receivership's going to be taken care of. There's going to be an opportunity to build this out. I think the town can negotiate based upon then looking for additional relief. I don't think a timeframe is that, is that out of the ordinary or it's not unreasonable.
And by the way, I apologize. I was also on tour with town manager, not in chief, Aron, who was also on scene. And they can probably attest to the project that they put together on Broad Street, you know, definitely cleaning up that area. Chief, you used to work in that neighborhood, so you probably know what a big difference it made over there. So...
I would suggest that the recommendation to the manager be that we reach out to Marathon and get some people in a room together to say, listen, you know, is this, if this is the best offer you can make, we're here to tell you that it's going to be done within a certain timeframe. Because like you said, prior to Mr. Ponti being removed from the building, I mean, we had all sorts of action down there. We had the huge fire at the mill. And that place really hasn't been, as far as the town's concerned, producing any revenue, tax revenue for quite a while. But if it can get back on the tax rolls, I mean, it's going to provide something to the town.
So I, I absolutely, I think as a town, we should have an appetite to entertain what, what they're talking about. I don't know if it's 4%, I don't know if it's 6%, but, but I would want to see something. They outline what they would like. I don't see any numbers associated with that. So I certainly wouldn't make any approval or recommendation based on this.
This is kind of like the first shot. But speaking to, to Mr., to attorney Land, they're trying to recoup monies that they have spent throughout this receivership. And I, because I, when I ran into him, I said, well, they should be able to regain it off the back of the town of West Warwick. Because West Warwick was promised a deal years ago. And then when Fred Presley got involved, they had all that big fanfare, big press conference. I think all the state politicians came down saying this was going to be a big deal. And it was. And then immediately reran into problems with the historical society because they wanted the exact match of the windows that were going to cost like 15,000 apiece versus what they could have done, save for 500 bucks. So that the prior developers ran into all sorts of problems. And then eventually they ran out of financial backing. But we could certainly notify them that we'd like to meet with them and, you know, see where they are as far as this 4% or... But it's something, you're not, you're not going to tie your own hands now until something comes before you.
I mean, the agreement, the agreement they sent obviously is very comprehensive, however.
It's all to their favor.
It is all to their favor, number one. And again, it is, it looks like it's a, an agreement that lasts forever. So we want to ensure that we are protecting the town's rights. And again, 4% of something is certainly 0% or 0%.
Cost benefit analysis, because the town's like, is not getting anything. It's great to dangle something in front of you, but you know, sometimes...
But we absolute, I think we should indeed engage with them at this point.
Can we revisit this?
Oh, absolutely.
So Sal and I will reach out. Usually this format, when we get in, like I said, I didn't see this until the agenda came out, is usually in the format of an ordinance and has some numbers by year. So it's clear. So we will reach out to them and seek that and also set up a discussion for a timeline and then suggest that they come and we'll put it on the agenda for 8:13.
There is, I mean, clearly there are going to be some, some estimates used because you don't know what you're going to collect. You don't know. So that, that's sort of a wild card. And I would like some protections for the town as far as that goes as well.
You could, you could table this tonight and keep it on until, because it's going to be further information. Further information is going to come into play.
Any other discussion? We'll take no action tonight.
Renewal employment agreement for the chief of police Colonel Ernest Levine.
I recommend the approval of the agreement with Chief Levine.
Second.
Chief, you stay? I think you're one of the first ones.
We'll see after the vote. So...
There has been no vote. Yeah.
So I'll, I'll just preempt them. Obviously, I've worked with the Colonel for now a little over 30 years. And I was honored to recommend and ask for you to appoint him as, as my successor when I transitioned. I, I think it's been a great working relationship. I think he's led the police department with honor and distinction during some very challenging times. And I thought initially, now three years ago, maybe we're 10 days shy of that, we put together a very fair employment agreement to maintain the services. So it's before you again this evening for consideration. The specifics of it are very similar with the exception of one MOA that came up in, in the middle of it that allows him on specific circumstances, more for manpower reasons, to be able to work some departmental overtime or, or special details as he, as needed or desired.
I mean, we're, I believe we're very lucky. I mean, we're, I believe we're very lucky to have you, chief, despite the hard time I might give you, um, once in a while. But, um, you, you do a terrific job. And as Mark said, it's a very difficult time to be a police officer. There's no doubt about that, so. And it's your leadership that makes the difference.
As Mary Beth said, we sometimes do give you a tough time. And, uh, glad to see that you want to stay, cause I'll be honest, I, I don't think we've had a chief longer than three, four years at a time. It's usually a couple of years and they get out and retire. So, it's good to see that you wanna stay and, um, represent the community. And I think you do a great job and even put us in mind sometimes when we give you a tough time, so.
I, I appreciate it. There, there's still some work I, I'd like to get done before I call it a career. Um, I'm honored to, to, to lead the men and women. And, and I don't even like saying that, um, I'm honored to, to work alongside the men and women of the police department, as well as my other department heads. Uh, I, I think West Warwick's fortunate to have, uh, an outstanding group of, um, town council members, the town manager, department heads that really, uh, go above and beyond for the community. Um, and, and it's the ben, it, it, it's to the benefit of the, of the citizens of the community. That's really the beneficiaries of, of our relationship and our hard work. So, I do appreciate the kind words.
Any other thing, you know, I, I have other police officer friends or whatever in the state that have actually spoke very highly of you and how many times you attend the academy when new hires come on, which you're probably the most visible chief at those academies. So, that speaks volumes, cause you're, you're teaching the, the youth and the young hires that it's important to be out there, so.
It's, it's important to embrace them immediately. Yeah, just welcome to your family after they get all the hard work done, so. Now, that, that, thank you for the kind words, I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
You did a great job overall.
All the comments, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Or I'm so, or I'm sorry, depending on which.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of public safety, public works and recreation vehicles and equipment and the financing thereof through an equipment lease purchase agreement. And authorization, and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and related instruments and determining other matters in connection therewith.
That's a lot, but I move the resolution, yeah.
Moving second, any discussion?
Had these conversations before, that, that makes sense to, uh, we took many of these things out of our capital budget and decided that it would be wise to go out and, and get the money to, um, actually get the equipment that is needed, so.
Hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
But beginning to interrupt, I asked if we could reshuffle the deck a little bit and handle these in, uh, alternative order, because they build upon each other. So, I'd request new business, oh, seven, the American Rescue Plan update go first.
So, you're looking, actually, you're looking to do seven, six, five and four. So, we're gonna do these backwards, correct?
Right, and then return to eight, nine and ten.
So, make a motion to move seven. Round number seven, Mark.
So, number seven is just an update on American Rescue Plan funds. I know we do this periodically and I include it, um, usually every other week or so in my weekly updates. But since I'm gonna propose using some money, I thought it would be best just to provide a public update. So, this is as of July second. And just as a reminder, we initially received, uh, just under nine million dollars in American Rescue Plan fund. So far, we've spent a little over five point four million of that. Um, we have an additional two point four million that's been authorized or designated for certain projects, but they haven't been completed and invoiced yet. So, right now we have, I, we need to spend just over eight hundred thousand dollars. We need, or need to encumber it, um, properly by the end of this calendar year. Some of the big items that still remain that I think that are priorities are co-share funds for the West Warwick Treatment Facility Congressional Grant. However, we learned that we might not be able to use, or we've been told we can't use American Rescue Plans funds for that. So, um, depending on how things play out, we may propose using American Rescue Plan funds for other projects that need to happen to free up their reserves to be used.
Do you know when you'll know? Do you know when you'll know, if you, if you're able to use that or not?
We, we pretty much know we can't. They, they've said we can't. I, I wanna see it in writing, so we're waiting on that, but.
Fair enough.
We have plenty of projects going on that, that need to happen, so. Um, but that's a three hundred thousand dollar area. Um, so that would eat a significant chunk out of the proposed date fourteen. Um, we also, I'm also looking to do, use a portion of that for our twenty twenty-five roadwork. Um, we do have some money getting thirty-three percent of what we did last year and thirty-three, slightly, less than thirty-three percent of what we did this year back from Rhode Island Department of Transitation. So, I'd like to supplement that, I think it's about four hundred thousand. Supplement that money with an additional, some additional American Rescue Plan funds, so we can do, um, some select streets in the next construction year. Another one, important one that's kinda been put off is investing some money in some internet or IT infrastructure. I'm hoping to have an advertisement out soon for an IT director, cause I'd really like that person to be responsible for pushing us in the right direction to replace our servers. That needs, that needs to happen and also a desktop replacement program. And then finally, um, shouldn't be a lot of money, but also I'd like to dedicate some money to finish the Civic Center Plaza renovations. Um, I know we're waiting on, the sign should be here shortly. Um, and we have the vendor that committed to donating his labor to do concrete work. Um, so that's, we're waiting on him and we're, we've, we're looking to pay for the concrete. And then the artificial turf to bring it up to the, the asphalt and any other little odds and ends that we wanna do there. Um, so that's kind of the summary of American Rescue Plan Fund. The reason I wanted to do this first, because of, in a few minutes, I wanna propose supplementing our design project for the Crompton Playground with American Rescue Plan Funds.
I hate to bring this up, but I know we've been going back and forth with this turf, grass, turf, grass. I don't know if anybody, cause it's on a hill, kinda gets me a little nervous, cause it bunches up, it'll bunch up in the bottom. It will adjust, it will slide, it will, so.
It's, it's not locked in stone, so we.
No, I know, but I know we've gone back and forth with this numerous times of talking about it.
Let's get the, let's get the concrete done and then we'll figure that out.
Well, well, I, I just, once the concrete's done, I just don't want everybody to start going and all of a sudden, like, it, it, it bunches up or whatever and, you know. Pointed out a couple of places, e- even in front of Route Two, there's an establishment out in the front. They, they're out there adjusting it every time they have a landscape of doing that. Um, same thing, if you look at Coventry, when Coventry put that over there, dump, you look at the bottom, there's waves. So, I'm just, you know, it's been pointed out to me and I'm just.
No, it's a good observation, so I.
And, and again, I just don't wanna, I mean, I don't wanna be healthy of make, what I call making it the bed, you know, pulling the sheet up and trying to get it tight and snug every six months. It's just not gonna happen. Grass, sod, whatever, it might be better off, but, but that, that requires.
Maintenance, yes.
Uh, well, not so much, I mean, I don't think it'll take more than.
Water.
Half hour, but the, the sprinkler system.
Right.
So on and so forth, I might wanna look at that, but either way, it's gonna cost us. I just wanna bring that up.
That's it for American Rescue Plan.
Any questions for Mark?
So, we're gonna move on to update for Crompton Playground project. That's number six.
This is for six.
J six.
So, Crompton Playground update. As you all are aware, we received a grant from the Department of Environmental Management, um, Planning and Development awarded a recreation acquisition and development grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Requires a hundred thousand dollar match from the town, whether that be cash or in-kind services. My plan is to do a significant part of that is in-kind services. But our total design, um, and wish list comes to more than that five hundred thousand dollars. We believe in, we, we wanna do this one right. It's in a, a fairly densely populated area. Um, since we're touching it, we, we're required to make it properly accessible. Um, so we really wanna to do this one right. And between the accessibility, um, rehabilitation parts, and we want to add some new elements to this. The town doesn't have any pickleball courts. This one would have a half basketball court and two pickleball courts as well as bocce. And what in my mind looks like a patio or stage that would be adjacent to the Historical Society building with a, a proper lawn there where we could host like night movies or whatever. Um, so, we anticipate, with all things being included, still being conservative with some wiggle room with those, the, the total project is estimated to be about seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, between what's been previously allocated in the DEM grant, we are still short by two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The project was delayed a little bit, mostly for soil sampling and redoing, making sure the drainage issues were properly addressed, because we obviously do have a big hill there, um, and a mill building and a river. So, it took a little extra time to, to have the engineering folks be comfortable with the recommendation and, and the plan to do that. So, following this, the next thing on the item is we have, we did a bid process for a contractor to do the bulk of the work that we won't do in-house.
Any questions for the update? Thank you, Mark. Now, on five.
J five, resolution authorizing the award for construction contract of the Crompton Playground and Stephen F. Clark Recreation Area Project.
So, we went forward, we had an RFP out.
I move the resolution, move the resolution.
Second. Okay, now you can.
Thank you. So, we, we had an RFP go out and we received two qualifying bids. We reviewed that specifically, our landscape architect, who is kinda leading the charge, reviewed it. Um, he's recommending that we go to the lowest responsible bidder on the project, and that's the resolution that's before you today. Uh, Bustle Brothers Incorporated of Cranston, um, bid in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, just for your awareness, that bid allows for some adjustments in several areas with per-unit cost based upon the town's needs. So, if, if we need to adjust what our expenses are, uh, based on what's been allotted, we can make some adjustments as we go. Um, but their bid is capped at three hundred and ninety thousand at this point.
I, I guess what jumped out at me is the significant difference. We only have two bidders, number one, and there's a significant difference and I assume.
Actually, if you, if you look at the line by line cost, there is so, there is significant difference all along, so. It, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
And we'll, the, um, contractor, so we have our, uh, landscape architect will be reviewing this work as it gets done, correct?
Right, he's our, he'll be our onsite.
Project manager.
Project manager, um, with our two DPW directors, uh, because we, like I said, we're gonna do a lot of the pre-work ourselves. And, and we anticipate that stuff to start probably within the next week or two, um, while we wait for the, the vendor and the con, vendor contractor to be able to formally start.
So, we're looking at potentially having it completed before the end of this fall into the fall.
It's all encumbered money, so we, we want it done before the winter.
Right.
I mean, with the, the equipment's already been ordered, so, I mean, we're already in the queue to get that. So, right now it seems like the, the timeline should match up with us getting the, the base work done, um, in anticipation of receiving the, the play equipment. And obviously, the, the other big investment is, is the port-in-place flooring. As we've already experienced, that's a significant investment. Um, but based on what the, the people and the, the kids that we're looking to entertain here, it's, it seems to be the, the best decision.
Yeah, no more wood chips.
No.
Ever again.
This is gonna be a great project, you know, when it's all done. It's, you know, it's, you know, Mark's done a lot with this. And, uh, you know, it's gonna be geared towards special needs and it's something we don't have, the apparatus, um, along with keeping the existing playground that's, that's already there. Not getting rid of basketballs, we made a half court, you know, um, and then we don't have pickleball here. So, two pickleball courts, bocce is more geared towards an older.
And the stage seems like, the stage seems like a cool idea too to have.
It's gonna be great, you know, the Historical Society is on board with it. They're very happy, they're willing to help in any way they can, you know, and it's nice collaboration, so.
And, and it's clear that, that the landscape architect did indeed go through the process and, um, I certainly will go along with his recommendation to award the bid to the lowest bidder, so.
We have to name that lowest bidder?
I read it off.
Yes, yes.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to.
So, so say it once more for me, Bustle Brothers?
Bustle Brothers of Cranston.
Sole, uh, as in son, yes.
Bustle Brothers Incorporated of Cranston in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand.
Make a motion to.
Accept the bid.
Accept the bid previously stated by, um, Andrew Mark, not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Finally, number four.
Resolution authorizing the town supplemental funds for the Rhode Island DEM two thousand twenty-two Recreation Acquisition and Development Grant Award for the Crompton Playground project from a mes, American Rescue Plan Act.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second.
So, after all the stuff that I just reported and said, as I mentioned, right now we're about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and change shy of, um, allocated funding for the, the project in its entirety. So, I'm respectfully requesting that we encumber an additional two hundred and sixty thousand in American Rescue Plan funds to supplement the DEM grant, the local in-kind work and the previously encumbered funds in Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five to adequately fund and complete this project.
And I assume based on what the landscape architect said, that there is some wiggle room that we may be able to save some money. So, if it's less than that, it just go back or be kept in the Opera Fund.
Yep.
Perfect.
And I just wanna stay, say, you know, I look around at other communities and what they're doing with their opera money and what they've done. Some plug their budgets, some plugged whatever. I just wanna say, you know, congratulations to the town of West Warwick, the town manager, this council for focusing on families of West Warwick, our baseball fields, our basket, our Riverpoint Park, our Crompton Playground. You know, we, we continue to improve our areas that have been neglected throughout the years. So, you know, I, I've had numerous people come to me and say, wow, you guys done a great job with the parks around here. Yes, sometimes it is taking a little longer than normal, but it's getting there.
I'd rather it take a little longer and we get it done the right way than have to go backtrack and redo things that we've done for certain projects in the past.
I think we all learned our lesson one time or another with other projects with wood chips and ADA compliant. Um, you know, I see Alan out there shaking his head, he knows about ADA compliant.
Well, it's good to do it from the beginning again, and I take, it's my word that other project, and I take responsibility. Things weren't, weren't done the way they should have been done, but we learned from those mistakes and we, we, we don't want it to happen again. On, not on this council's watch anyway, so.
But I gotta say, like I said, opera money being spent the way we've been spending.
We have, we have not created any operating deficits.
Yeah, but some communities, they, they will throw their opera funds quickly as they got them.
Yep, so, good job. Any other comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you, Mark.
Discussion action, consideration of potential charter amendments and approval of ballot wording.
This is it, it's final.
I, I don't have any ballot wording for you at this point, but I figured if you guys wanted to discuss any amendments, Tim and I can pump something on the fly, so you can have it all approved. I wanted to give you the opportunity in case you were there. If not, we deal with it in the future.
There was certainly given a number of things, and I, I know that I went into it thinking about the financial town meeting and, and the way we approve our budgets. And that's one of the things that's presented in. And that's one of the things that's presented in the package tonight. I still. Not unlike when we talked about increasing, you know, stipends for town council members, we let the, we let the voters decide that and. I I sort of think that this gives them an opportunity to make decisions and we live by what we live by. I do think the way we do things is a bit archaic. And there is some cost to it. It's not a breaker, but it's a cost and. We do put a lot of time and effort into budget process with two, two. Workshops, two public hearings, so. Again. I would be comfortable asking the voters to make that decision for us one way or another, so. But there are a number of things in this list that we were presented with, quite honestly.
So, and I was not here the last meeting, so a super majority is just four to one, right? Minimum of four to one, is that what a super majority would be for us?
See, it's a super majority.
So four.
Or one five oh, one of those, yeah.
Now, let me ask you this, if somebody's absent, super majority, three out of four.
Brother shows up. Forum is let it be anything that's over half. If four people show up, you don't need a super form, should have formed about three. Two people show up, super forms two.
And I doubt that would happen. I mean, we could make sure that it doesn't happen unless there's a.
Unless you word it, but you have to have a minimum number of councilmen at that, that, for that forum for that particular vote. Just leave it as a super majority and majority. As long as you have a forum to start the meeting, there's only three people here, the super majority and the majority is still going to be two.
Is that why we can word that as full attendance?
Yeah, well, yeah, you could say minimally on the night of the vote, there has to be at least.
Five. No, no, you can say at least four, because what if, what if we have a, what if somebody steps down and we only have four councilmen?
Say, you could put five, four, whatever number you want, but you can, you can address that issue.
I don't mean tonight, I mean, like when we, we had a vacancy for, you know, what was it, a couple of months last year, right? So in case that happens, you don't want to have where you can't.
There could be reasons to.
Unlikely that a councilman missed that on purpose.
No, 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 but I'm saying if, if the spot was vacant or something like that, I want to make sure that we can.
What if it's not on purpose? Are you setting yourself up not to have a budget?
Somebody, yeah, somebody's sick.
No, but what I'm saying, you guys have the control over the wording. So if you just leave it alone as majority or super majority, it depends what the forums, but if you say you have to have a minimum amount of people here for the forum, that's how we would word it.
Well, it says which is, shall be a majority plus one.
No.
If some three people show up, majority's two.
Has to be three.
I'd like to think we'd have more than three show up for that, but.
Yeah.
But that's, if the if the council wants to go that way.
I mean, if there's some, you know, extremes, if there's, you can postpone the vote until and take it another day, yeah.
So the wording is fine, I think.
It's the part of what Sarah said, we can put together variations of that, you guys can take a look at it and.
Yeah, I, I, as I said, I don't think that the wording that you provided, I assume you provided this to us, Sarah. Is, I think that that's appropriate. I don't know where it came from.
When does this have to be approved?
Coventry just used that.
That's what they used.
When does this have to be approved by?
Individual council members.
August one.
You have to have the wording to the.
Of the state by August one, is that right, Sarah?
The, to the state, yes.
But we don't have another meeting before then, right?
We would have to have something special to, yeah.
Or we could, I mean, or we.
Circulated first.
No, I mean. Unless we approve this one.
I, that's correct.
I think this one is sufficient, but what do you think?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to with it too much, to be honest with you. I think it covers everything. There are other things that have been suggested, as you can see. Also, and but you made it clear that the state recommends to us that we do not. Add too many items on the local ballot, because there are going to be plenty on the state ballot.
Probably stick to three or less per question.
Is that what they said, right?
That was their recommendation based on what they see coming for state bond questions. They, we don't want to get into a situation where we have a two-page ballot.
That makes sense, no.
I think with something like this, I think it's only fair, I do this for anybody up there, that councilman here right now. And it's due August first, and if we have to have a special meeting, I mean, I'm all for it. You know, to have another meeting in July.
Well, the wording is probably going to be positive. Because realistically, she could send it out to us for.
Well, that's what, what Jay just said, well, so unless you just go with this. Yeah, and it might be that, you can, you can, yeah.
I just, I feel more comfortable.
Having Mark, that's fine.
You know, anybody, any one of us, I mean, we all should be here, so.
That's fine.
We had, we had a lot of discussion. I know you weren't here last time, but we had a lot of discussion about the budget here and. You know, I even came up with maybe having the meeting and the vote all in one night, but. Sarah gave me dirty looks and one of the throwings at me that night, but.
I was just, so, so I just want to.
Just.
I just want to make, if we could, if we could at least with the four of us, set the time of the day we're going to do that now, maybe, is that something we can do now? Or does that?
As far as having a special meeting?
Yeah.
You guys could discuss it, sure.
I just want to set a date, because I'm, I'm.
Work to put it on the agenda for that meeting.
The only thing is, so this is, this is specific to the budget. It doesn't say anything about the financial town meeting, so we would have to strike that as well, correct?
Correct, yeah.
If you're interested in having just a workshop to get this thing done, so you can vote on it that particularly, you think, you only want three items, one of them is going to be the budget and financial town meeting. If you decide what the other two are, that that would be on the agenda, and that would be the only thing you figure reading about, but obviously, discussion, action, you can vote on it, but it's going to be done before August first, right?
I I guess my point is that that would be two items.
I think you could probably make that.
One item, okay.
Item, I don't have with me the actual ballot question. Used. But I think you can word it in one, just saying, do you agree to, basically, do you agree to?
Amend the charter to eliminate this and, yes.
Budget process or something along those lines, because we can't have it too wordy.
No, you don't want it too wordy.
The model of want to change from the financial town meeting with the vote that night to the financial town meeting and then the all-day referendum, that was just one question.
Yeah. Yeah. We do have to provide a further explanation as well. It has to be posted at our polling locations, advertised, everything else, but the actual question itself, I think we could amend it in one.
So if that's one question, what would the other two be that you might be interested in?
Actually, I'm sorry, let me backtrack just a little bit. If the voters wanted to get rid of the financial town meeting, because at this point, it really doesn't do anything anyway, it doesn't. But they didn't want to change or take away the all-day referendum, so I think maybe you should do it.
Yeah, I think it's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Because there might be people who want to do one but not the other.
The financial town meeting serves no purpose at this point in time. The budget's already been voted on by the time we we get to that, so, so that's.
Just for reference for Coventry, they just did the one question.
They did, but they had already abolished their financial town meeting at that point. They just. Were having an all-day referendum. Most towns.
They didn't have, they didn't have a meeting after when they switched to that.
They'd already switched to eliminate their financials.
I didn't know they got rid of that, okay.
Yeah, I think we're one of only five communities that still has a financial town meeting, and the other four that they can vote there.
Because they only did this for a couple of years, because up until like six years ago, they were still doing the arcade stand-up and raise your hand and somebody comes around and.
Right, and counts it.
Counts you holding up two hands and, yeah.
So that's two questions. Anybody have an idea for the third one, because?
I mean, this, we, we have to have three questions?
No, you don't have to.
And maybe we just leave that and and not confuse it unless there's something that, I mean, we we did ask town, we did ask department heads to give us some suggestions.
I think Kristen had made some recommendations about the purchasing policy.
Purchasing and also moving appropriations.
And Kristen just texted that, so if you want her on Zoom, she can share more.
Sure, we'll take her on Zoom.
Hello.
Hi, Kristen.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Yeah, I think between the two, between the appropriations. If I had to pick between two, I'd like to get the purchasing all lined up with the state. If if we can do that.
So the competitive bidding?
Yeah, it would change, it would, it would align, it would adjust our ordinance to say that the purchasing. Rules could be changed by resolution and that we would be piggybacking the state. Dollar limits in how they use the C P I to adjust yearly. I I had written it with Al. It was very short and sweet, but basically it changed that wording in the competitive bidding to say that. It it could be changed by resolution and that it would be in the, in. Through resolution is, is how we would set up the purchasing policy.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
Is there a way to combine those two into one question to get both of them passed?
Yes, so that might be, so so it might be under the heading of streamlining or simplifying.
We had another question, what's the big deal? You know, it's a, it's a quick thing, you know, if you're going to have three, now four, which, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't see the difference. I don't see anybody skipping the fourth question or getting.
I think it was just about.
It's a space, actually.
Stay expense portion of it, I guess.
No, not expensive.
It just being on a second page.
Right, you don't want to have a, yeah, the ballots are already front and back and obviously it's a very long.
I bet the transfer of appropriations, which, that wouldn't be a horrible thing, Kristen, to leave that in just the the last three months of the year, I assume, but I bet we could combine one and two in some fashion to make it creative and.
Yeah, I think the, the.
Straightforward enough for people to understand it.
Yeah, where where it comes in handy is like, once, you know, once we got negotiations done now. And we've got all the raises in place and everything like that, where I could take it out of general government. And put it in the different departments now, so as we're going along through the year, we can truly see how we're doing.
Correct, that makes sense, yep. So maybe what we'll do is try to combine those two, one and two, on on that page. And there are certainly other things that we should address at some point and. I don't know if it will be at the May financial town meeting or not, or we'll have to wait.
Yeah, but if those two would be great, definitely huge.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So time to wordsmith.
Did you guys want to schedule another meeting to wordsmith that, or did you?
Well, I would take suggestions from you.
Well, I'm counting on that guy for ballot wording, but.
But the.
The legalese.
What's like the deadline that you, I know you said, just make sure you make the phone. I know you said the deadline, how long, like how long would it take us if we have the meeting? How long does it take you to like?
I don't know, I, I, my suggestion would be that we task clerk and the solicitor to make those changes now. Get them out to us so we can actually have them in advance and I. I know you guys like Tuesdays.
Well.
Do you have a preference? I know, Tuesday's your day.
Well, my question, that was, that was going to be my question, I, I was, is the thirtieth too late for you to do it, that's my question.
Well, that gives you only two days.
Well, that's why.
As long as you have the wording, it's fine.
As soon as you guys approve it, I can send it off.
That's what I'm saying.
So you would vote, you would vote that night, and you could send it out that night or the next morning?
That was my question, how quick?
Assuming there are substantial changes, but I can't imagine it would be, because we can do them.
No, but those would be done, and we would kind of know what they are.
Without, without violating the Open Meetings Act with a rolling quorum, I think if if the information that you have is going back and forth between the clerk and myself, as long as everybody's not in together. You're going to get something you're probably all going to be able to agree upon.
No, but we're given the direction, kind of what we want right now.
What I'm saying is, that particular night when you're voting, if there's a minor adjustment to be made, I, I think there'll be just minor things to be made.
Okay.
So I. So if we're going to have suggested the meeting's going to be on the thirtieth, which is, I think, what I heard. I would like to think that we would have the wording a week ahead of time.
Yeah, I didn't mean we get those stuff and show up and see it for the first time on the thirtieth, yeah.
Well, that's what I mean, I'm just setting expectations.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we?
That gives you guys two weeks to come up with some wording.
I was going to say, why don't, why don't we get everything to you by the twentieth?
That'd be great.
And that way you guys could work on it for five or six days and then.
Perfect.
You know.
So the idea is that to schedule a meeting for July thirtieth.
And that would be the vote?
Yes.
Not a discussion vote, excuse me.
It'll be just a special meeting just for that specific most.
That's it.
Or maybe who knows.
Well, if something comes up.
Something else comes up, I guess.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Ready to move on.
All right, discussion action, consideration of no camping residing on public property ordinance.
So I put this on the agenda. Because we had it on the agenda before. And there was really no resolution. Al was going to do some research with other cities and towns. And. I I'm looking at more of, this is, this is a West Warwick thing, because I'm, I'm a West Warwick, we're all West Warwick council people. What the state does, what other communities do, that's, that's, that's up to them. But I'm not looking to take away anybody's rights. Anybody can can do exactly what they're doing now during the day. Whether you go to a a doctor here or eat in a restaurant or. Visit another establishment, use our ball fields, whatever, just at the end of the night. You know, the the camping, there's no living. You're either living somewhere or, or you're, or you're not. And you, you're not. Can't reside in the woods. On the bike path and you can't reside in the woods at the parks. We've all seen the result of this. And this is what this is, this has caused, basically. We've all seen the pictures, we've all heard the stories. From our our fire chief, our police chief, from, from the residents, the taxpayers. And I'm thinking at this point, at at dusk, when everything closes down, then. You can't be here. It's, it, to me, it's pretty simple. I'm not telling you where to go, that's up to you. I can just tell you that there's, there's thirty eight other cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island, where you can't live overnight in West Warwick.
Now, where do we stand?
After it was given to me, Sarah. Sent out to town clerks, she got half a dozen or so responses that they have nothing, no ordinances. I sent to the council the response I got from the city of Providence that they don't have an ordinance, they just go in. And give them X number of days to get out, and if they don't get out, they move them out. They did say to me that the gentleman I spoke to said that all of the times they've cleared an area, they only had one. Arrest made, and that was for somebody who was camping on a, an overpass or something, and he refused fully. And they did arrest him. Other than that, the only. Ordinance that I came up with, and in all honesty, I was not about to sit and go through thirty nine ordinances looking for this. Was the attorney that has prepared our zoning, the zoning code and is working on the regulations. She sent me one, she informed me that Cumberland has an ordinance, and so I looked that one up. And their ordinance just says, any person, it shall be unlawful for any person to erect any tent or to camp. Or live in any park or playground area without official permission. Any person who commits any offense entitled to the. What is, shall be punished by a fine, not more than one hundred dollars for each offense or by imprisonment, not more than five days or both. That's the only. Ordinance I could find, and, you know, within a, as I said, I didn't, wasn't going to spend the time of looking at thirty nine.
That was Cumberland, you said?
That was Cumberland.
Do you, are you familiar with that solicitor or the clerk or Sarah, are you familiar with the clerk there?
I do know who the clerk is there.
And I mean, is, so in practice, has it worked? Does it?
I don't, the only thing I got was apparently when Sarah sent out her request. My guess is that the, the attorney Kelly Salvatore, who may be a solicitor in Cumberland, I'm not sure. She sent me a response saying, I'll be sending you a copy, Cumberland has an ordinance. I never got the copy from her. So I looked it up myself. Cumberland has an ordinance. I never got the copy from her, so I looked it up myself. But I didn't follow through at that point in time.
I, I think that says enough for us to start. Um, and I would just, I would like to elaborate on that more.
At the last meeting, the question of Supreme Court came up that it's now been decided that it's okay.
I, I think it is important that we engage the public safety people in that discussion and what that ordinance should be and if we can really enforce it and, because if we can't enforce it, then.
But how, I don't wanna see how you can't enforce.
I mean, just manpower wise, if we, if, if that's an issue, so that, that's.
My, my question is, is your intent that this is gonna be non-criminal and it's gonna be civil?
That's not up to me.
Well, you've already got a statute that allows for law enforcement to, for a willful trespass. Every person who willfully trespasses or has no legitimate purpose for his or her presence remains upon the land of another, which includes the municipality. Eleven forty-four twenty-six, it's criminal trespass. Says the same exact thing that Al was referring to in Cumberland. The question obviously is how you treat this delicate situation regarding the homelessness, but they're trespassing on private property, excuse me, public property, regardless whether it's a basketball court, the woods, the bike path. The towns have the right through law enforcement to go in and arrest them for trespass, as long as the warning is given that they have to leave, because if they don't leave, now they're holding over and you can arrest them. But that's it all comes down to enforcement and I think the chief was pretty clear about where he stands as far as manpower and what they can do and what they can't do. So, I mean, you're, I, I hate.
Happens in the system after that, I think.
Yeah.
Chief, and I'm putting you on the spot, but we just did a proofy contract, so you know, I'm not feeling that bad. Yeah, yeah, all right. I mean, I, I think I've heard you say things like, yeah, we go, we arrest them, we put them in jail and they're back out in no time, basically, so.
Well, I, I think the first part of it is, I, I would, before we took any action, I'd feel much more comfortable um having a discussion with um Dan Griffin, our prosecuting solicitor, uh to make sure that, that we were in line with, with his thoughts and his process. And it may not even be a bad idea for us to reach out to the Attorney General's Office, our connection at Kent County Courthouse. You know, if, if we went the criminal trespass route that uh Mr. Williamson spoke of earlier, there's no doubt in my mind that these people, you know, if we, if we make the arrest, give them X amount of time, give them a warning, they don't vacate uh public property within X amount of time. Uh, we put handcuffs on them, we bring them to the police station. We'll either give them a summons to appear in court at a later date, or maybe they're violators and they go in handcuffs to the courthouse. Nobody's gonna spend time at the ACI over, over this stuff. It's not.
That's not the goal, though. No, this is where I'm conflicted, right? Because here you have a person who's down and out. And we're gonna make their criminal record longer, so when they try to get a job, that shows up. We have a fine of a hundred dollars, which they probably cannot pay. Or we're gonna just hurt them even more. So the criminal aspect of it, I, I, I have a problem with. The aspect of them taking over properties and destroying them and affecting other people's livelihoods, I have a problem with. So it's I, I have a tough time with this because I've been catching a lot from East Main Street and you know, and a lot of residents are very upset about it and, you know, but again, if they leave there and go to Natick, you know, in the back of their ball fields, then Mary Beth's gonna get those phone calls and it's just what, what do you do? And I know we're looking and we're trying, the state's trying, but now the state's in shambles with one individual resigning. You know, we, we had a meeting with that individual right here in the office and there was no talk of anybody resigning and, and, and they got such a, a new staff. The people in, in the state have been in their roles for less than a year. So to get them moving, they gotta get their feet wet, know their job. And then you have the person resign, so now the homeless in Rhode Island are probably gonna be pushed to the back burner once again. Unless you get somebody in there that's going to be an advocate and, and get the money and, and help these individuals. And unfortunately, we can't do it in West Warwick. We can't afford to be housing everybody here in Rhode Island. And, but I just don't wanna see an individual who's especially, and, and there's all different homeless. We, we know that, right? And there's some that you may never be able to help, but those individuals that just lost their job, lost their house, but they're trying to get back on their feet. I'm not looking to give them a criminal record a mile long for every time we boot them out. And, and then that also taxes our court, courthouse every week for.
Well, if I, if I may, I'm sorry, you're not taxing the courthouse of the municipal court. You're talking about the district court. That's the, it's a different animal.
Yes, but.
But if you take.
A burden on them.
No, no, but if you take it out of the criminal element and it's back to civil, the question now becomes who's going to enforce civil trespass?
I got the impression from Providence that they don't go criminal unless that one incident. That what they do is they go in, they post the notice, you've got X number of days or hours or whatever to clear. If you don't clear, we're coming in and we're gonna clear you out. And they even go so far as they give the people notice that we're taking your tents and we're taking your bed uh sheets and we're taking your cooking stuff and we're bringing it to this location. And you can come there and, and pick it up. They don't.
But when, when, when Saka did it.
If you clear out, we'll, we'll, we'll store your equipment until you want it back.
When, when Saka did it, she, Mayor Paul Delhi Hunt utilized the police department to remove not only the people, but their belongings. I don't know if Providence used the police or building.
Everything.
You know, so as soon as a group of people that aren't supposed to be where they are, see a group of police officers come in full uniform, usually it doesn't end up good. And I think West Warwick wants to avoid something like that, because the, what, when Saka did, turned into a horror show when she tried to move the people out to a different location. Providence, I don't know what type of luck they've had, but again, when it comes down to enforcement, it's not gonna be like everyone's gonna be subservient and say, yes, you're right, we have to leave, we're gonna leave peacefully. If that's where they're living, it's gonna be very difficult to remove those people from where they live. Because think, think of as a landlord, landlord tenant matter, the tenants are protected under the law where landlords can't go in and do self-help. What you're basically doing as a municipality is self-help on your own land, because you're saying, we don't wanna go to the extent of criminal trespass. But we're gonna give notice, you have to be out of here in five days. Say thirty percent decide to stay, see what, then just basically say, well, let's see what the town's gonna do. Let's see what, let's see what happens. Now who do you send in? The building official and the DPW or do you send in law enforcement?
Well, Providence does it by taking all of the, the, where they're staying, everything away.
Right, but just imagine if you're, if someone's taking your stuff, do you think you're gonna sit by idly and watch them do it if they're not police officers? If it's just a regular guy from BPW. Right.
We're compelled to properly and safely store it.
No, it's impossible. So that's, I'm not saying that, but where, like where would we put it?
Public Works Garage.
Storage unit, yeah, we'll have a storage.
I apologize.
I'm just saying, I'm just realistically, realistically, that's a very.
And, and, and just to, to go with uh, with Mr. Williamson's, my concern also is for my men and women. I mean, there are gonna be a, 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 you know, i- if we posted no trespass or we officially notify ten people in a specific area that they're on town property, um I've been doing this a long time. Not all ten are gonna leave. Whether we give them a day, five days or ten days, we're going to be back there and there's gonna be X amount of people that are gonna say, I'm not leaving, make me leave. And then now, now what do we do?
That's your option.
And I, and, and I don't.
That's when it becomes criminal.
I, I, and that's fine, but, but these things go sideways pretty quickly.
Confrontation.
And now, at the end of the day, we can all say that we're enforcing the law and that's fine. When we stop putting our hands on people and using force to effect a legal arrest, it's never going to go well. It's, it's going to be on videotape, it's going to be all over social media. That doesn't mean we don't do our job as law enforcement officers, but we do have a concern with that stuff. We gotta handle this, you know, tactfully. You know, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying the town should go one way or another, but I do have a concern for the health and sa- safety of my men and women in uniform as well as the residents themselves. That is a big concern of mine.
Well, would you and or Mark reach out to Dan Griffin and the Attorney General's Office to just get a feel for what we're, what they think the protocol should be? I think that would be helpful that we know that going in.
Absolutely.
So we don't wanna be fighting against the people here in West Warwick and the state as well. I mean.
They're, they're both very responsive. We've had similar issues that I've reached out to them in the past. So I, I will, um, I will absolutely reach out to them and, and see what their, their gut feeling is for them.
I still am of the opinion and unless we can provide a, a place for them to be, it's difficult to move them out.
Yeah.
I mean.
See, I, I, I disagree with it. I go back and forth with it, you know, and it's some of the things that, that really bother me is, you know, when Kathy Schultz came up here and we talked about housing, and I think East Greenwich was, was the place where it was um was that, there was a place where there was going possibly be a lot of houses. And she said, well, it's difficult when you go out to a site to get people to apply for the vouchers or however, however that works. Put their name on the paper so the paperwork can go through. And I feel the same exact way. I would give the shirt off my back for somebody who is unemployed, can't get a job, is trying to get back on their feet and, and just can't. They need that help, but they're willing to help themselves. I'm not looking to enable anybody. And I think that's a lot of what's going on. I, we've all seen the picture of East Main Street. We've seen the pictures of Flat Top. That's not people helping themselves, that's people taking advantage, that's leaving the places like, excuse my language, but you know what? It's a shit hole. And that's what we're getting known for. And that's what the taxpayers, at least in my ward, I've done a lot of walking, you know, these past week or so. And, and that's one of the topics that comes up. And that's what our areas are being known for, and I don't think that's right. Do I wanna see people arrested and have their stuff taken away from them? Absolutely not. But at some point, somebody makes the rules, somebody has to enforce the rules. And you always have people that are gonna, that are gonna say, you know what? Screw you, I'm not gonna do it. I'm sure you run into that all the time. You know, so what do you do? You can do one of two things. All right, sorry, you're right. You walk away. Or these are the rules. I'm gonna give you another opportunity to follow them. A third opportunity to follow them. And there are advocates out there, we've seen them all up here at the, for the past couple of years, screaming and, and and being upset with us and advocating for their clientele. And I totally respect that. But that's up to them to get on board, to help these people and say, there's a new, there's an ordinance coming, ordinance out, an ordinance coming out. This is what it says. This is what the police are going to do if you don't move. And the question is, all right, where do I go? Cause I know that's coming up too. That's, and that's where I'm going to say, there's thirty-eight other cities and towns that will allow you to be there. You can still come in here and you can come and, and eat at the restaurants, you can come for your resources. Um, that's, that's fine. I'm not saying, I'm not taking away their rights. But you can't be here openly. And to look at the pictures of the trash and the needles and, and to to look away and say that's okay, because that's what you're doing right there, enabling.
I know it's, it's apples to oranges, yeah, but like Block Island, totally different place, I understand this. But they do have a very strong no camping ordinance. I know they don't have a homeless problem there either. I'm curious what their ordinance reads. I know, and again, I know it's West Warwick and Block Island are not the same, but they, I know that they have a very strong.
That's, so that's to prevent people, you, you go there a couple of times a year, I go there.
Yeah, yeah, I can't just show up on a beach and sleep there, no.
Pop a tent up on the beach and say.
I understand, it's for two different reasons, but, but the verbiage of it would be, probably be similar. I don't know if you looked at that one, Al, but.
Yeah, we all feel bad. I feel, I feel bad too. And, and it really bothers me to, to, to put this on the agenda, but enough people have come to me again and said, what are you gonna do about it? You're a council person, that's your role. And, and that's why it's on the agenda, to have this discussion. And the action I would like to see is to give, you brought up the ordinance from Cumberland tonight. Expand on that ordinance, put it on the next agenda, have another discussion, and I think we're making some type of progress here. I, I don't wanna go round and round. You're gonna talk to Dan Griffith and we can come up with some type of procedure for this to happen. Because if not, if, I'm not okay with what's going on in East Main Street. You know, if, if you are, that's fine, you know, but that's up to you. And, but it's something has to happen. And when you said, you, we all made comments, when people are using, turning off their electric at night because of issues, issues happen at the school, I've had people from the Flat Top area call me and said, things have been taken out of, out of our sheds. Not accusing anybody, they weren't accusing anybody, but we have cameras, we see who it was, where they went. It, it becomes a safety issue. And that's all that is about. And our job, I think, is to make sure that the town of West Warwick is safe, including your men and women.
And, and I'm gonna be honest, you know, I, I'm not happy with East Main Street, what's going on there, and I think I've been very vocal about.
Anybody is.
But I, I'll, I'll be honest, I also defend, you know, three, four people were at the gazebo this week. All right, they got their shirt off, okay. But that doesn't mean they're doing anything wrong. They're hanging out at a gazebo. Is it clean? Yes. Are they urinating? No. Are they respecting the property? And they have the right to be on the property, of course, because it's, it's town property, exactly.
Until you're doing something wrong.
And, and I'll be honest, there was a crowd here a year ago saying, clean up the gazebo, clean up the gazebo. I don't see one of them going to the gazebo and sitting. So as long as the gazebo is clean, I don't care who hangs out there, as long as they're following the laws, not doing the drugs, not urinating in public and doing whatever else behind the bushes, I, I'm fine with it. So I've had phone calls of, oh, there's people at the gazebo. So what? What are they doing? Are they doing anything wrong? No. I don't, that, that's fine. They, they're entitled to use it and I agree with you. If you're here during the day, you use facilities, you go to different places. You know, at night? You should not be having fires on our riverbanks and, and taunting the neighbors across in the backyards.
That's what's happening.
And, and using their electric.
Already have ordinances that outline everything that you've been talking about. It comes down to enforcement, so under Article, Chapter twelve, offenses miscellaneous, disorderly indecent conduct, indecent exposure, consumption, possession of alcohol in an unlicensed victulating establishment, the imaging property, vandalism, graffiti, obstructing doorways, ringing doorbells, loitering, discharging firearms, select the premises. You've already got these in your own ordinances now that basically say, the person that's on public property who's not utilizing for what it's supposed to be there, you can remove them. That's already, it's already happened, but you have to enforce it. So no matter how many ways you try to write it or rewrite it to get what you wanna get or achieve what you, your intent, you already have that in your existing ordinances. They just have to be enforced. But you're right back to where you were, you know? You don't wanna put West Warwick Police in harm's way if you've got three hundred people, thirty people. I mean, just imagine not knowing what you're walking into and you're telling these people, we're gonna remove you tonight or within a week. We're gonna take all your stuff. We're gonna have to contact DCYF for your children, because nobody knows what the hell's going on with them. It's gonna be, it's gonna be very traumatic and it's gonna, it's not gonna end well. But right now, you have the, you have the ability to do what you wanna do based upon your own existing ordinances. And I hate to sound like I'm beating the same drum over and over, but it's all gonna come down to enforcement. And you have to make, as a council, you have to make the decision. Are you gonna enforce the laws and ordinances that you already have versus going to a brand new ordinance that already does what you, you, you have the authority to do?
Again, I think, I think some input from Dan Griffin and/or the Attorney General will help us, because again, if we go in and we possibly remove them and they wind up right back here, what does that do? We, we have to be working together, as I said, I'll say it again. I would love to be able to find a place. Not that we run, because we can't afford to do that, we don't have the expertise to do that, but that we can say, you can go here and if you don't go here, then you're out. Just saying you have to leave and assuming, or, or we're kidding ourselves if we think they're gonna, they're gonna move to Coventry or they're gonna move to Warwick. They're gonna move to River Point or Natick or that's what's gonna happen and we're gonna be playing whack-a-mole. That's what's gonna happen.
Still think we can control that. Well, I think, I think the, the non-criminal uh civil sanctions, if, if I'm not mistaken, would be a matter for municipal court if, if, if I'm not mistaken. So that, that, that's a whole different ballgame than the criminal aspect. Because in, in municipal court, we're not putting handcuffs on them. We're gonna give them an notice to appear. And if they don't appear, they don't appear. And there, there's no enforcement mechanism to make them appear. There's no enforcement mechanism to collect fines if we choose to fine them. That's a whole different ballgame than the criminal aspect, which is a violation of criminal law where we put handcuffs on people and we take them to jail. And then they end up in the, in the courthouse, either with the summons to appear, and if they don't appear, there's a bench warrant for them, they get handcuffs put on them again. So those are two different avenues to go and they'll require different input from different people based on how the council want, the council wants to proceed.
based on how the council wants to proceed.
Thank you, Chief.
Al, could you look into the Block Island one, too?
Yeah, if you might, if you would send us those to Cumberland and Block Island.
I think you sent.
I sent you.
I did see.
Again, like you said, this is a little different because it's for people that are going out there to party and sleep on the beach or whatever. But I mean, they don't even allow camping out there for like.
Yeah, if I follow what you said, that the direction towards the municipal court as opposed to criminal, that it's not criminal, as we all know, can't enforce anything from municipal court. But if they're brought in and they do come, the judge can, you know, give them a talking to, whatever, as opposed to the district court.
Well, I think the last time we met and we discussed this, I know everybody kept talking about the Oregon case. Well, that case has been settled and, you know, unfortunately, it didn't go in the homeless favor, you know, so, you know, I think, you know, if we do enforce, it's not going to be a matter of. The Homeless Bill of Rights, you know, that's been handed to me a couple of times. And, you know, I've read that up and down, it just gives them the same right that you and I or anybody else has. Follow the laws, follow the rules, and that's it. It's just protecting them to make sure they're not being charged with something that we wouldn't be charged with or whatever, it's just protecting. Doesn't say you can break all the laws and do whatever you want in any community, so.
My personal opinion is the most sensible thing I've heard said in all of the discussions, came from Tom Olts, when he said the state, Howard, where they have the vacant buildings. I remember when I was a kid, a long time, they, we used to refer to that big stone building as the poor farm. It's not politically correct anymore, but that was.
You weren't in the bad boy school there, were you? Yeah.
That's right.
You got threatened.
That's where I got threatened and said, that's where I'm.
Ruta 22, Ruta 22, where the boys of the institute.
No, and again, like I said, I think the state's in shambles right now as far as what they need to do. So if we can get something and we can figure it out from there on.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
School Building Committee update.
So there's nothing substantive, we're still in between the Phase One submission and the architects reviewing that and preparing a Phase Two submission with some potential solutions. We're still a couple of months away from that. Due to summer commitments, our meetings have shifted a little bit, our next meeting is July seventeenth.
And I know the school committee had one representative on there whose term will be up in November. Are they replacing that individual? I meant to ask, but are they going to be replacing that individual?
I hadn't heard officially, people were not running again, but.
So, yeah, we have one individual for Sue St. Ammon, she's not running for reelection, that I'm aware of.
But you also have.
It should be as a member of the public?
Yeah, she could remain on there, and you have the chair. Because the chair of the school committee is on it as well.
Okay. Like, that's not a bad idea, if she chooses to stay on.
If she chooses to.
All right, that one, I'll shut up.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board to Review, Appointment to Fill a Vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Board to Review, Appointment to Fill a Vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax Assessment Board to Review, Appointment to Fill a Vacancy for a three-year term. School Building Committee, Tree Warden, Recreation Committee, Appointment to Fill a Vacancy for a three-year term. The Tuxette River Authority was reappointed this evening. Planning Board, Appointment or Reappointment for a Five-Year Term, that was also filled this evening. Zoning Board, Appointment or Reappointment for a Five-Year Term. West Warwick Two Hundred and Fiftieth Commission, Public Forum.
Public comment.
I'm Blazo Five Robin Lane, and it's been a while. And I just came up with some items while I was sitting here, and I'll go try and cover them quickly. One is with regard to the Crompton Playground. Hopefully, somewhere in the line, you guys have opened up to the Governor's Commission on Disabilities and involved them. I know with regard to Factory Street, after we really got rolling with that, they said, hey, we're here, we'd be more than happy to help. So I hope West Warwick contacts them, gets them involved, Bob Cooper has left, there's somebody else replacing him, but that's just a thought, please consider it. Did I hear correctly, you guys are considering abolishing the town meeting?
So we're looking to, so we have the Town Financial Meeting, which attended, I think, how many people this year?
We're not kind of boys?
It doesn't make a difference, David, let me elaborate, okay? When I turned eighteen and was given the right to vote, one of the first things I did was attend that financial town meeting. The Journal even had a story on me being there.
Did you vote at that meeting, though?
Say again.
Did you vote? Was that a meeting where you voted?
Where I could actually vote, I had the right to vote, they changed it in nineteen seventy. You may go look in the Evening Bulletin, did it at the time. But that is a New England institution, the New England Town Meeting is one of the purest forms of democracy. You may consider that you're doing something because only ten people showed up. I've been there when that auditorium was packed and people were yelling from the back. It all depends on what affects people's wallets, what the taxes are. When you had a group actually take over the town meeting and run it, but do not, trust me on this one, you will make an enemy, and I will come out, I've been away, but I will lobby against that. I will bring that to the taxpayers of this town. Once it goes away, it's not, but that is an institution, keep it there so the people have their rights. If you look Norman Rockwell as a series of painting, The Four Freedoms, one of them is a man standing at his town meeting, speaking his voice. That is what America is all about. I don't want to hear any BS about democracy, that is the truest form of democracy. So just take a look at The Four Freedoms, Norman Rockwell. When I heard a reference to the CPI, hopefully you're not looking at the generic CPI, up at the State House, they use CPI Northeast Urban. Hopefully, that's what you're going to be looking at because the devil is in the details. I'm learning a lot being up at the State House, and that's one thing, so please take a look at that. A simple aside for the chief, I noticed you've got a new door down in Phoenix. While there, looking at that, please paint the cupola. All right, you've got the ladder truck, you've got everything, so please look at that. And with regard to the last item with camping, the Supreme Court rendered a decision, Johnson versus Grants Pass. I've been to Grants Pass, it's a beautiful little town on the Rogue River, just north of the border with California. Take a look at what they are doing now. Look at the Supreme Court decision, I believe it's seventy-two pages, it's online, it's accessed. And I just want to talk about, Mr. Williamson's talking about ordinances and you have the ability to do things now. Grants Pass argued, it was a class action suit, and their argument was homeless people aren't forced to sleep on public property and that the Eighth Amendment has nothing to do with public camping laws. They assert that the encampments, and this relates to West Warwick, as Mr. Goslin pointed out, threaten public safety with sanitation problems and fire danger. And I think we've already experienced fire danger or fires. So I just want someone to point out, maybe you can reach out to Grants Pass, look at their ordinance, look at the Supreme Court decision, and refer it to the State Attorney General and have him come up with something applicable to the whole state. That's what he gets paid for, to serve you guys. He's the chief law enforcement officer in this state. It's not up to the taxpayers of West Warwick to come up with a solution, that's Mr. Nerona's decision. You know, that's above your pay grade, let him do it, and then refer it to the State House. I know Speaker Cicaci, one of his number-one priorities was homelessness, okay? He put money into that, they've got these pallet houses. But this is beyond the scope of West Warwick taxpayers, and I'm just admonishing you. Take a look at it, refer it to the appropriate people, I'm sure Mr. Williamson would like to engage in, maybe not litigation, because that would be good for him, but, and I have no problem with him doing that at the proper point. Let the State Attorney General deal with this, and Johnson versus Grants Pass, as it applies to the state of Rhode Island. And I'll add in Providence Plantations, too, because I'm old school. And have a good night.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comment? I don't think none.
We shouldn't move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you, you have a good night.